Welcome to the January 10, 2023 City Council meeting. Happy New Year. Roll call, please.
Mayor Webb.
Here.
Mayor Proton Londo.
Here.
Councilmember Laquero.
Here.
Councilmembers Sullivan.
Here.
And it takes us to the approval of the revised agenda.
I move approval of the agenda as revised, but renumbering the consent agenda items one through 10.
Support.
Okay. Any dissension?
Discussion?
Can we pull number 11 or number 10 for just a minor amount of discussion?
When we get down there, just pull it up. Approval of the agenda is approved. Special presentation, a proclamation honoring Martin Luther King Jr., whereas this body rightfully honors those whose lives create a cultural and spiritual touch point for people's lives across the world and whose legacies embody the very concepts of justice, truth, and equality. And whereas Martin Luther King Jr., being one of those such Americans, is duly honored and is chambered on this day. And whereas Martin Luther King Jr. was born on January 15, 1929, in Atlanta, Georgia, and was tragically killed on April 4, 1968, in Memphis, Tennessee. And whereas Dr. King's life traces the very filament of the struggle of equal rights and struggle for that is very much ongoing more than 50 years after his death today. And whereas, from his education at Morehouse College and Boston University, to his courageous civil rights, working, including the Montgomery Bus Boycott in 1955, to the March on Washington in 1965, to his historic march from Selman to Montgomery in 1965, Dr. King serves as a relentless testament to the human right spirit, unending desire for freedom and equality. And whereas, now more than ever, Dr. King's belief is changed through nonviolence and his unwavering desire to see the world sweltering with the heat, oppression transformed to an oasis of peace and justice. It is prudent and necessary that we, as it has ever been, and whereas, now more than ever, Dr. King's dream is necessary lesson to all peoples across the country, including here in our own city, who speak to pursuit of life unmerred by the scourge of the prejudices of today. And whereas, it's a rightful then and a body condemns and acknowledges the life and legacy of, commends and acknowledges the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And whereas, in doing so, the council members urge all Hazel Park residents and recommit themselves to the lessons Dr. King preaches about more than half a century ago. Therefore, be resolved by the City Hazel Park and the members of this City Council hereby honor the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King and urges all Hazel Park residents to shape their lives by those holy tents and kindness, peace and equality. Thank you. So move. Civic announcements will open up for civic announcements from the public. Anyone have any civic announcements? I see. Fire chief?
Nope.
What do we got? Anyone else? No, seeing one from the public. Let's go to the City Council. I have one here for the bowling fundraiser from the fire department. Saturday, February 11, 2023, Madison Park Bowl. Check-ins at 3:30, 4 o'clock PM for bowling. $100 lane sponsor, $20 per person, 50/50 raffles, on and on. If you want to get ahold of anything, you can go on the Hazel Park webpage. I'm sure they'll have a post-it there for any applicants that want to get a team together or you can show up on that day and see if we have a couple lanes open.
I would say call ahead.
I would probably call ahead.
I would say if you don't reserve ahead, there won't be any spots.
It'll be tough.
Yeah, it usually fills up.
Yeah.
Fills up pretty quick.
And it goes to one of the sponsors or one of the big benefits of the Hazel Park Firefighters Bowl-a-thon is the Hazel Park Youth Assistance Committee.
Exactly. Anything else?
No. Thank you for that.
Okay. Takes us to civic announcements for any council people. Okay, seeing none. Closed civic announcements, public discussion from the public. Anyone have anything they want to come up and say, advertise? Come on up, give your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Kurt Gore, 21640 John R. Road, Hazel Park. Happy New Year, everybody. I just wanted to come up and say hello. It's been a while. Fortunately, things are going really well and extremely well on the south end of Hazel Park. Want to thank council and the administration for the support of the south end and the city in general. There's lots of exciting things going on in the city. And without your support, a lot of these things couldn't take place, and the future is looking very bright in Hazel Park. So wanted to first and foremost, thank all of you for what you're doing because the residents speak very highly of what's going on. There's a excitement constantly within the neighborhood with people walking their dogs the last couple of days, especially when it's getting a little warm. But everybody's excited about the future in Hazel Park. So thank you to all the administration, the police, the fire department, Public Works, everybody that contributes to this city to make it a great place to live.
While you're on that speech, why don't you tell us about some of the new businesses right there in the strip mall? The coffee shop, what's the name of that?
Hazel Perk.
Hazel Perk.
Which I've gone into the other day. Very good coffee, great atmosphere. We have D's Small Bites. Dolores does a wonderful job there. Great food, very reasonably priced. We have Eastern Palace Club, which officially opens on the 17th of this month. The full liquor license has been approved. And within Eastern Palace, you have the Smoke Lotus BBQ that's operating. They're at this time operational, so you can get your carryout or you can go in there and sit down and eat with Smoke Lotus. But the Eastern Palace Club will officially open January 17. So we're looking forward to that opening. And from what I understand, there's a lot of other people applying for businesses, licenses within the city and especially on the south end. So, yeah.
And we also have a dog grooming place coming.
Bingo, if I'm not mistaken, which is great.
There's little different parts of retail back and forth.
Yeah, I believe.
Really exciting.
That's Frank, if I'm not mistaken. Frank is operating Bingo. He's in a couple of other locations. So lots of focus on the south end in Hazel Park in general. So thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you.
It's Brian and Clinton for Bingo. But what's really awesome and unique about that as well, all of those businesses there that are opened are owned by Hazel Park residents.
Yep.
Which is such an amazing testament to our community and the future that we're building here, which is awesome.
Everybody believes. Thank you. Closed public discussion. Anyone else? Closed public discussion. Goes to consent agenda, one through imaginary 10. So anyone wishing to approve this?
Approval of the consent agenda items one through 10, but pulling 10 for discussion.
Do we need a second on that?
A second.
Okay, and we're pulling 10 for discussion.
You can just put it in there and just discuss 10.
Yeah, we necessarily pulling, just wanted to discuss it. I, so number 10 is about sidewalk signs. And I just wanted to clarify some information for the general public about that with our city administration. We had a nice conversation about this earlier today. Of course, I can't find my consent agenda number 10 here. But could you, City Attorney or Ed, could you please give a brief overview of the reasoning behind this and what the outcome of this tends to look like? Please, sorry.
Yes, council member. We're proposing this to make sure that we have some sort of regulation with respect to the placement of sandwich signs. We've had a proliferation of sandwich signs. We want to make sure that the sandwich signs are attractive, that they are not blocking access on the sidewalk, and that they are not in any way inhibiting visibility for people crossing the street or turning out of a street onto a thoroughfare. So we figure this is the best way to do that and will also, of course, give us some ability to make sure that these things are of quality and a certain size.
Awesome, thank you. Can I ask also, is this, does this match or mirror any other community, local communities' ordinance on these or is this a kind of unique situation here in Hazel Park?
I can, you can, Jim Finkley or Amanda Mason, who did the lion's share of the research on this, can further address this if you'd like.
For the record, I think this is a great, I think this is a great option for our city. I just want there to be more communication about why we're doing it and where this information comes from.
Well, this actually is just, it's not changing anything about our current sign ordinance. So we already regulate this in this exact fashion. This is just bringing our fees for this type of sign more in line with other communities. So Ferndale and Royal Oak are $70 and 75 annually. So we're not changing any of the regulation. We're actually just reducing the fees for this particular type of sign because 325 is kind of steep for a sidewalk sign.
Awesome. Thank you so much, and I appreciate that communication because I think that, I was a little bit confused about this when I first read it, and I wanted to make sure that our business owners were aware of what was happening with this. And this is per sign, not for a grouping of signs. This is per A-frame, is that what we're calling them? A-frame, what is it called?
A-frame, sandwich sign.
Sandwich signs.
Sidewalk sign, portable sign.
And I do think it's really important for our community to be able to make sure that we are not blocking the thoroughfare and accessibility for people with different abilities. So, thank you.
Yeah, this is just reiterating. And also on the numbering for the consent agenda, that's my fault, so sorry about that.
[laughing].
Thanks, guys.
Making us think, first meeting of the year.
Yeah, I mean, we, basically, we've never charged anyone $320 for a sandwich sign. So this will give us an ability to actually enforce this properly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other items on the consent agenda we need to talk about? Seeing none, hearing none, made dissension. Motion passes, consent agenda is approved. And we'll take it to public hearing. Community block grant, CDBG funds, application to resolution 01-005-23. I'd like to open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this particular issue, please come to the podium. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing on the CDBG grant.
Mr. Mayor, for the public record, the City Council is required to hold a public hearing on the expenditure of approximately $82,643 in community development block grant funds for the year 2023. The administration is proposing the funds be allocated with $78,643 going to code enforcement and $4,000 going to services for domestic violence at Haven.
I think that's awesome. We're giving some money and raising that for Haven.
I'm very, very happy to see that amount slightly increased. Also, for the public, just so people know, when they hear the word grant, you know, kind of we oftentimes think of like a very specialized grant that the city might apply for, a department might apply for. A community block grant is, it provides state and local governments funding to assist them in addressing broad purposes, primarily community development, social services, public health, or law enforcement. So it gives us more control, this type of grant gives us more control over where we can place those funds to create those benefits in our community versus a grant for a specific use like sidewalks or a new equipment for our police department. So, and I am very grateful to our community to be, being able to increase this money for Haven. Thank you, guys.
Okay. You.
Need a motion?
Mr. Mayor, you'll need a motion.
To adopt.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt PY 2023 Annual Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, application.
Support.
Any more discussion, dissension? Motion passes. Administration reports ordinance to repeal, Chapter 2.04, election second reading.
Mr. Mayor, this is a housekeeping issue designed to bring our ordinances into compliance with state law and charter changes. Melissa Schwartz worked on this. She's here if you have any questions.
Yeah, motion?
Move adoption of ordinance number 01-23.
Support.
Any discussion? Any questions for the City Attorney? Seeing none, decision, any dissension? Motion passes. Item two, ordinance to add, Chapter 15.57, storage containers, first reading.
Mr. Mayor, this is an ordinance to regulate the placement of storage containers here in the city of Hazel Park. Mr. Finkley and Amanda Mason are here if you have any questions about this ordinance.
I had some questions.
Let's get a couple of people up here.
Hello.
Long time no see.
We do what we can.
Okay. Shipping containers may be placed on a temporarily, the sentence, it's 15.57.030, point two. Cargo shipping containers may be placed on a temporarily placed for 45 days or less.
Yep.
I'm not sure what's in there.
Yeah, sorry, that should be placed on, should be temporarily placed for 45 days. It's worded.
Maybe.
Messed up.
We changed the time at the last minute, so I think that's why.
Sure.
After our meeting with them.
We'll get that corrected. Gotcha.
And the 45 days, seems like in sometimes these construction projects, we're giving people 180 days, 90 days, sorry, 180 days or 90 days. That's something reasonable, the 45 days. I mean, I haven't used it. I just, or is it something that we could renew every 45 days or something?
We actually, since that was sent out, one of the things we've added in is an exemption for active building. So at the discretion of the building official, we can allow that.
Okay.
Yeah, longer timelines.
And then, you know, you have some permanent containers and then, what does that address? And we have some businesses that want to use a
Yeah.
container as their storage outside.
Or attempting to expand their business and running around property taxes, so.
I know there's a particular grocery store on DeQuinder and Nine and a Half Mile that I have repeatedly called about all the storage they have outside.
Yep.
I mean, many containers.
Ongoing problem.
And that would be, yeah, so that's, try to attempt all of these things, try to attempt to address people who want a slow move for a year with a pod. You have neighbors that, you know, they're stored, there's more long-term solutions that you can look at. So obviously, all of it's subject to potential expansions at the discretion of the building official slash city manager, but.
And how would this affect container homes?
No.
It's not related, this is not related.
Is that what it, no, that's not, this is straight up.
I was reading some about, it's, these are allowed if they have all the applicable building permitting and zoning regulations are met. And I'm thinking.
I think it would be different.
Residential?
This is right. I think we're looking at, one, we want to make sure people aren't plopping these things in the middle of their yards for extended periods of time with no real plan or willingness to move these at any time. And the other thing that we're looking at is to make sure we're seeing this in the business community, too, that people are bringing in containers and they're using them for storage and actually incorporating them into their business.
Correct.
And, okay, but we need to make sure that that doesn't become a substitute for constructing permanent fixtures. And if they're going to use it on a permanent basis, they need to be making sure that those things are licensed.
And then making it permanent kind of leads into taxable property.
Why, yes.
That was going to be my next question.
So if.
It's possible.
Or, go ahead. Did you want to?
Oh, no. Well, I mean, hey, maybe that's a way we can improve the tax base.
Then it changes the whole thing. They have to follow all the, sell the contractors.
One of the reasons why they do this is because it's a temporary structure and they can, you know, they avoid payment. So now they're going to have to pay on a yearly basis to keep it.
Okay.
And that'll also open it up to inspection and code enforcement and building department. Wonderful.
Exactly.
Well, I think that matters, too, for safety in our neighborhoods because if they are using this in any kind of functional storage, you know, the possibility that there's electricity on site that might not be properly maintained or maybe properly installed. As somebody that has been a victim of a fire, I never want anybody to experience that, and this is a great way to help prevent that.
That's all I had. Thank you. Thank you. I just.
You had the same questions as this side of the table, so A+.
Well, you all read it, so.
We all literally focused in on that, that part.
Now you get a motion to adopt on first reading.
Motion to approve the ordinance 02-23 on first reading.
Support. Any more discussion, dissension? Motion passes. And item three, the FOIA appeal.
Ed.
Mike's calling us.
Oh, it just turned off.
Mike McFaul says hi, everyone.
Sup, Brett?
Item three.
Hold on, I've got to find it. There, what is the?
Mr. Mayor, there is an appeal of a FOIA denial from an applicant in the matter of Kristin Hofseppian. Is there anyone here on this matter tonight?
Seeing no one.
Seeing no one. Mr. Mayor, the administration recommends denial.
Commends to affirm the denial.
Motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that this body affirm the denial of the Freedom of Information Act from Rockkind Law in regards to the Kristin Hofseppian issue.
I have a support.
I'll second.
Any more discussion, dissension?
Yeah, no, I just want to jump in and say I think it would be prudent for us to decline to fulfill items that don't exist.
Takes us to the boards and commissions. We want to.
Mr. Mayor, the administration is recommending the appointment of, the reappointment of Jeffrey Campbell and the appointment of James Finkley and Lisa Mayo to Main Street Hazel Park.
Is that one of those things where you're appointing someone and they're not in the room?
Yeah.
No, he's agreed to really, really, he's agreed to be on it.
Okay.
Jeff.
So you get to show up.
Where are you, Jeff?
Well, I would move approval of appoint, of these appointments and want a reappointment.
Support. Anyone else? Dissension, discussion? Motion passes. Do we have DDA requirements?
Yes, administration recommends the appointment of Monica Reti to DDA board.
Motion to affect?
So moved.
Support.
Passes. Anything else?
We were going to need some more appointments to that board as well because Mike McFaul has also stepped away due to his responsibilities with the legislation.
Do you have a couple of people to comment?
Check and see, think of that. Do any one of you have?
DDA.
DDA.
On time for DDA?
My wife would kill me.
So, okay.
I'm Arts Council, I can't.
Okay. Well, we'll take a look.
I'm already on her.
Okay.
Okay. We'll have to find somebody else.
Okay.
Okay, it moves us on to new business. We have to set a date for the interviews for the city council position.
Do we first need to make a motion to accept the resignation of Mike McFaul?
We can.
I would like to make that motion, please.
You should do that.
Sorry, I missed that one.
I will very depressively second.
I know.
Anyone else have comments? None of us want to take this, but, I mean, he's a great guy. And best of luck to Mr. McFaul and his endeavors in the State House. Motion passes. Okay, set a date for his replacement of interviews. We got seven candidates.
Mr. Mayor, I've been talking with all of you. I have an idea. Tuesday of next week, we have a joint meeting with DDA, Planning Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, City Council to hear a presentation from the Michigan Municipal League on different housing plans that they have to kind of fill in the gaps for housing, multifamily housing with adequate parking facilities and things like that. These are new designs that would incorporate nicely into our neighborhoods and not cause some of the problems that we saw in the past with multifamily housing in neighborhoods. So we've got that joint meeting. Maybe we want to, that should go about an hour. Maybe we want to have interviews after that.
I think it'd go longer, an hour.
I don't know how long, I mean.
We're just doing it Monday.
I think I've got conflicts on Monday.
We got seven candidates, 15 minutes an interview, a person.
I've got.
That's going to eat up two hours.
We don't, we don't have to interview all seven. We didn't interview all last time.
No, we don't.
Think we submit.
Arrow it down to three or four.
Top three, like we did last time. Yeah, I think that's fair.
I think that'd be appropriate.
Are you down to top three?
Yep. You can all submit our top three by the end of the week so we can notify the candidates to come in.
Yeah.
We need to do it by Thursday, right? So he can have time to mail it on Friday.
I'm not going to, I'm just going to call them or send them an email. I mean.
Okay. By Friday, what time? Noon?
Just get them to me, you know, within the next few days.
Okay.
Get it to me by Friday morning sometime, Friday noon, if that makes you all happy.
Whatever fits your criteria.
Packets.
Top three candidates, that sound good to you folks?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that need a motion?
Looking at Melissa.
Don't think we need a motion. No.
All right. Takes us to any other new business, any council people have any more new business?
Do we need a motion for the date for the interviews, Melissa?
No.
No? Okay. But we're tentatively.
No, we'll just post it if that's, if, again, like, you know, this meeting, we, it's all going to depend on, you know, how long the league goes and, look, we can, the legal go, they'll talk as long as we let them or, you know, they'll make a presentation as short as, you know, they need to make it. They were in our office.
The league meetings at what? That means, that means at 6 o'clock Tuesday, right?
They can do it in an hour.
Yeah. The league meetings at 6 on Tuesday.
They run a little bit, you know, the applicants can stick around. It will be enlightening for them to see what's happening in the city.
And that is a, that's an open meeting, correct? The public can attend that.
Open meeting.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone, any other new business? Moves us to communications from the department heads. Any department heads wishing to make any comments? I'll make it all quiet out there. Okay. All right, communications from the city attorney.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year. City manager?
Amanda, did you have any? I'm signing from.
Yep.
Okay. A couple of things. First of all, I want to thank everyone who expressed condolences and sympathy with the passing of my mother. Everyone's kind comments were of great comfort during that whole process. She was a great lady. She lived a long life and passed away after a brief illness, and I was glad to have her in my life for many decades. And I appreciate everyone's expressions of kindness and sympathy. It meant a lot to me and to my family. A lot of people asked about arrangements and things like that, and my mother was very clear in her wishes that she did not have any service, she did not want there to be any viewing, she did not want there to be any public funeral of any kind, and we honored her wishes. So in lieu of flowers or donations, the family is simply asking that you do something nice for someone you love. That's it. That's what my mother would have wanted. So anybody who wants to honor my mom's memory, do something nice for someone you love. A couple of things here, I want to, in the time that we've had since our last meeting, there was some discussions on social media about the street lighting assessment and that this was a new fee. This was not a new fee for the umpteenth time. Every five years, that fee will be on the winter taxes instead of the summer taxes due to the statutory requirements that we have for renewal of the fee. The fee is not a new fee. In fact, it actually went down a little bit from the last time that it was levied. So of course, we wish we didn't have to charge it. We wish we could lower all the taxes. But as I say at every meeting, Michigan's system of municipal finance is fundamentally broken, and until that system gets fixed, we're going to be stuck doing some things that we don't want to do, and, you know, we're all in it together, and hopefully the legislature
to do. And, you know, we're all in it together. And hopefully, the legislature this time will, will make some changes and some modifications to what is really the worst system of municipal funding in the entire 50 states. Finally, talk a little bit about the south end of Hazel Park. You know, overnight success is usually the product of about 10 years of hard work behind the scenes. And, you know, I got to thank my, my mayor and council for all their efforts as well as the members of my administration who've worked so hard on this. You know, both of my city attorneys, young Mr. Finkley, and of course, our former community development director, Jeffrey Campbell. So, I want to congratulate Mr. Campbell on his new baby, Catherine Anne. And we can't wait to see her for a visit. And that's a great thing. So, one more thing, and this is on a much more sober and serious note. We're getting a rash of stupid, unfounded, but nonetheless problematic threats to our school system. And I want everybody watching this broadcast to know and to understand that we will prosecute you to the fullest extent of the law. If we catch you, we expect you to be incarcerated. And we plan to make sure we hold the prosecutor's office and the judicial systems feet to the fire on dealing with this issue because enough is enough. We had here in Hazel Park an example, not just of a student, but also of a parent making a threat. That parent was arrested for felony terrorism charges, and the youngster was incarcerated at Children's Village. So, we are not screwing around with these types of threats. We take them very seriously. We will hunt you down. We will prosecute you. And you will be very unhappy with the consequences that are imposed upon you for doing something stupid like this. Again, everyone deserves a chance to get a great education. Everyone deserves a chance to go to school and be happy and healthy and free from fear. And I want you to know that we're going to take every one of these threats seriously. And we're going to make sure that you're prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law, whether you're an adult or you're a juvenile. We're not playing around with you. So, I want to be clear as day with that. So, on that note, I'm done.
I'd like to pass along to our councilperson Sullivan. We'll make you first today.
Perfect. Thank you. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. It's really nice to see a good, full audience here. I am looking forward to the interviews for our city council appointment. I obviously will miss Mike McFaul on our city council here. He was a great member, a great teammate up here working for our city. But we are lucky to have him in a higher office still working for our city, which is really exciting. Want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. I hope it was a safe and happy and healthy one. I forgot to mention something during the civic or public announcements as my, putting on my Arts Council hat. Hazel Park is having a art wall grand opening February 5th from 1:00 to 5:00 PM. And you can meet the artists, have refreshments, and they're offering 10% off all their artwork there. Also, with my Arts Council hat still on, we have some pretty cool things in the works right now, including hopefully the creation of First Fridays, as well as seeking some display and gallery spaces in partnerships with businesses, existing businesses in our community through the Arts Council. So, we're really looking forward to that. And that's it. Be, be kind to the people in your neighborhood, if not just to honor Ed's kind mother, but just as a general nicety in being a good neighbor. We've been lucky to have these warmer temperatures. And I say luck with, in quotations, because global warming is real. And as a dog walker, it's nice to have 40-degree winter walks, but it's really not a great, it's not great for the long run. So, don't forget to recycle.
You know what, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, you forgot something.
Councilmember Sullivan reminded me of something. We, we did give funding for the pop-up on John R. just north of Eight Mile for, it did, it did make it in the budget deal. On the very last day, it was passed by both houses of Congress. So, we have, we'll thank former Rep Levin for his efforts. And we've got the grant that we're working on, first of all, over at the Rec Center for the pole barn. And I want to thank Jared Gajos, who's not here tonight but usually is, for his efforts, as well as Lacey Christian-Fritson for the work that they're doing on that. And I'm probably going to have to tap them both, as well as Jim Finkley and the attorneys, to deal with the pop-up. So, I did talk to Jeffrey Campbell, who wrote the thing. And he said, "Ed, I'm going to be there. I'm going to help you guys." So, we'll also hold him to that. So...
We'll see.
Like, I'm expecting you to, Jeff, because this was something that you came up with. So...
Thank you.
But that's a good thing.
Councilwoman Kirill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy New Year to everyone. This nice weather kind of reminds me that it's probably only about 90 days before we have some nice bicycling weather for the Hazel Park Bicycle Club. And congratulations to Mike McFaul. Really good working with him. And not to put too much pressure on him, but I, I'm hoping for some big things. And again, you know, condolences to your mom. There was...
Thank you. Thank you all.
And as she, you know, she got what she wanted. She's with your dad. And on that note, if you love somebody, tell them. If you have children, hug them every day and tell them you love them. Thanks for coming out.
Mayor Proton?
Happy New Year, everybody. We did not get the two feet of snow that I was hoping for, which is a bit of a bummer. But I did get to spend New Year's Day jumping in the exterior. And everybody should try it at least once in their life. I want to echo what Kurt said. Also, nice running into you at Great Clips. That was hilarious. South, Southern Hazel Park is really popping off. And I've been here for about six years. And I spent the first three years kind of like in the Browning where the Cellar Men's was. And, you know, the, the north part of this city had a lot of like the amenities and the excitement and things that you were looking for. And being on the south side, seeing the development over the last three years since I bought my house has just been absolutely fantastic. And being able to walk over to Deez and Eastern Palace Club and all those other things is just really reminds me of the progress that we're making in the community. And I, I know how many hands go into making things like that happen. So, thank you to all the business owners, fellow members of council, city administration, the phenomenal staff that you have and all the work that they did putting all that together. The first meeting of the Michigan Civil Rights Commission for calendar 2023 is happening this year in, in Detroit. It will be on the 23rd. I will post details if anybody's interested in attending. And good luck to all the city council applicants. I have the distinct privilege of being, I think, the only member on this body who went through the application process. And it's a lot of fun. Hope you enjoy it as much as I did.
Go Lions. I just have to rub that in. I'm sorry, dude, but...
Well, you might as well go ahead and finish your other comment you forgot.
No, that was it. I just wanted to...
System, Michigan system of...
I already said it.
Did you say it? Did he go?
I said it.
I thought you missed that one. Just want to make sure. We want you to break your record here.
I, I did say it.
Happy New Year to everyone. And congratulations to Mike McFaul and his endeavors in the future. Hopefully, we can look for great things to happen from him. And our state legislative house, it's been a long time since we had a person from Hazel Park in that position. Many, many decades.
1992, Wilford Webb, when he retired. That was the last time we had someone from Hazel Park in the legislature.
Been a long time. And it's kind of nice to have that distinction again after all these years. And my condolences to you, Mr. Klobuchar.
Thank you.
And your family and your brothers.
Thank you.
And I'd like to say, you know, we have a, a new year coming up. And we got a lot of new developments coming supposedly. We'll see how they all pan out for the future of the community. And I think we'll be, a lot of people will be astonished if it all comes through. And with all the new possible residences that would be coming into our community and other commercial areas as well.
Yeah, we gotta, we have a lot of stuff in the cooker. And if we land even half of it next year, it'll be a huge year.
Exactly. And I'd like to say thank you to our staff. And once again, to our staff, Happy New Year. And let's, let's may have another better year than we had last year. And be happy. We all have jobs. We're all happy. We're healthy. And can't have any more than that. Just being, having family around, having friends around, enjoying life. No more is there. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Support. Thank you.